All right, we're going to call the order, the business session of June 8th. Sarah, would you please call the roll?
Berg.
Here.
Allen.
Here.
McCann.
Here.
Romanski. Swanson.
Good evening.
Tucker.
Here.
Bauer.
Yes ma'am. I'd like to take just a second to acknowledge one of our own who's not with us tonight. We know that Mary is recovering from a medical incident and we're missing her very much. Both her wisdom, her long board tenure experience and the contributions that she makes to this board, you see every day, a lot of times we don't even see those contributions. So, Mary, if you get to watch this at some point, know that we're thinking about you and certainly having her in our class in person, we are keeping a chair warm for you so you can come back soon. So, look forward to having you back. All right, we will move on with a continuation of the trend that we have started with good news for Shakopee. And again, you get to listen to me read for a few minutes. I think I need a little training then. Item number one, congratulations to the class of 2015 as they completed their final step by walking across the stage at commencement on Saturday night at Grace Church. Graduation future is bright and we're all very proud of their accomplishments. They had a great graduation ceremony, everything went totally smooth. A great time to also have our Takata learning students involved. Quarter four at Takata had one of the largest graduating classes they've had, nineteen students. And in fact, their graduation, so today they had it open in the movie theater, which is different homes. So, Takata continues to do great things. So, for all of our graduating seniors, we say congratulations, good luck, and come back and see us. Item number two, another congratulations for a few of our groups. Rachel Paulson's advanced APR class at high school won first place for the mural design contest for Main Street Shakopee, which you can read about in the paper. That's great. Second place was also awarded, took top two. Shakopee Public School Student Group, a group from the East Junior High called Marshall Artists. And the ALAS group, I don't know what that stands for.
ALAS, yeah.
ALAS, I'm saying right. At the high school took third place. Good group, isn't it sweet? Excellent, excellent. Congratulations to all of those students. Item number three, Shakopee Public Schools Welcome Center opened today, today, here at the district office. Traditionally, students and their families have registered for school at the school that they attend. That process was often inconvenient for the families who had multiple children, made it bounce around. Now, the district has created a one-stop shop, location for families to register all their students in one place, that's here. The first day was very successful, we already have eight new family registers. So, congratulations to all those who made that happen. Item number four, spring sports have wrapped up. Congratulations go out to all of our baseball employees, tennis teams on winning conference championships this spring. Also, congratulations to our co-op adaptive softball team with their undefeated, I thought that was very, undefeated season culminating in a state championship. That's outstanding. And I think we're going to hear a little bit more from Mr. Jenke in his talk later on about some other things from an activities perspective. And finally, there were many year-end events happening throughout the district, including kindergarten graduation in Sweeney, the Jackson Pride picnic, the Sharp Awards at Pearson Sixth Grade Center, the Sabre showcase at the high school, and the student talent show at Red Oak. So, thank you again to all of our wonderful teachers and staff for all the things that they do, again, day in, day out, at Shakopee Public Schools. Good things are happening, schools even out, good things are happening, which is wonderful. So, thank you Crystal for this. All right. Do we have any visitors here tonight who would like to speak before? If so, please be ready and ask them forward to sign in. Seeing none, we will move on. Let's move on to consideration of the agenda as presented or any additions. Do we have any additions to the agenda for tonight? Chuck.
Chair, my word, I would like to add an agenda item, seventeen point five under new business action items, the subject will be my role on the board identification.
Very good.
It may not require actions.
Seventeen point five. Chuck, I'll just come to you with that.
Okay.
Any other additions to the agenda tonight? Sarah, did you have any?
No, that would be it tonight.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
Sub moved.
Second?
Second.
Chuck. Any discussion? All those in favor signify the same "aye".
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, we have an agenda. Let's move on to consent. Do we have a motion to accept consent as presented?
Okay.
Chuck, second?
Second.
Scott, any discussion on consent? Chuck.
Mr. Bauerman, I would just like to make a couple of comments. The first one, of course, on thirteen point one point one and recognize JP for the legislature minister, that was on the group that hired JP and that do a kind of a heartbeat for your time with JP. And also on thirteen point one point two, and I just wanted to highlight some of the work of Mary Hernandez. You know, she worked diligently to narrow the achievement gap here at Shakopee, but also she just worked extensively within the community to help create the culture of our community and really wish her the best.
Any other comments?
Chuck took mine. Very well said, I will back those, both those comments.
All right. It's been moved and seconded, no discussion. All those in favor of accepting consent as printed, signify the same "aye".
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, we have our consent agenda passage. All right, let's move on to full business in terms of sequencing, just go with the flow, right?
Yeah, I think the, if we just stick with the fifteen point one, if you want me to tee that one up?
Yeah, if you would please, sure.
If you remember as a board, one of the things that we talked about about a year ago was that we were going to participate in a number of things to make our community and our schools even better, from free admission to sports and activities and the arts, to bus wifi, to a number of things. But the board said we would try it, but we want to get some evaluation so that we can determine if we go forward. And so, John Jenke's here tonight, activities director, Mike Brulager, director of finance, with recommendations on each one of the topics that you requested be brought back to you.
And then, on the agenda, if we can just move the technology people up ahead of the budget because certain part of the budget's built on what they're proposing, so.
It's very good.
But participation, there was an attachment in your board packet that went over the participation, and John's here to talk more about that. Although we added activity bus in two routes, it seems like it's stable to slightly growing. So, one of the reasons we added activity bus was to see if that would grow, and I don't know that it, you know, the numbers stay, stayed fairly, fairly steady. So, didn't see tremendous growth, but we did see some.
I think that's just a steady trend. I mean, our class sizes continue to grow. We've seen a slight, a steady increase over the last number of years and, you know, anticipate that continuing, but we've not had a huge spike because our class sizes are just continuing to grow and our participation numbers continue to slightly grow evenly.
But why don't you go ahead with your portion of your summary?
Well, as a part of that, I just wanted to come back and share with all of you, you know, I know you guys had a part of your packet as well. Just kind of a very quick summary of the transition this year to the South Suburban Conference. You know, I just wanted to hit a few of the highlights of the highlights. You know, I think overall, you know, we fit really well enrollment-wise, we're really right in the middle and we're, you know, one of the few schools that are continuing to grow. You know, the ones above us are pretty stagnant or declining in enrollment slightly. So, you know, I anticipated in a year or two that we're going to be in the top, top two, top three, if not the top, top enrollment in the conference. You know, in the fall, our boys cross-country team won our first South Suburban Conference championship, so that was certainly nice to come out in the fall and able to win a conference championship right away this fall, to kind of prove and show to everybody, you know, we're here to stay, we're here to compete, and we competed well and had a great fall. Number of other programs had, you know, really good seasons and a lot of them finished right in the middle of the pack, if not the upper part of the conference. You know, we advanced the doubles team to the state tennis tournament this fall in girls. You know, maybe an interesting tidbit, our boys soccer team this past fall went through a stretch of six straight overtime games, which I had never, ever seen. You know, I'm sure it's probably not all that uncommon in soccer across the world, but it was something I had never been a part of, and it was an interesting couple of weeks there going through that. You know, the winter, I think, was highlighted by boys, girls, basketball, and wrestling. You know, we had seven individuals qualify for the state meet in wrestling, and then we had two-place winners, we had a fourth-place winner, and we had a state champion, Brent Jones, who was a second straight state championship. Our girls basketball team got through the section after getting to the section championship a year ago, got to the state tournament, got fourth place. Our boys team returned and got, for the second straight year, was winner in the third-place game. So, second straight year of a third-place finish. Also, in the winter, we had three kids qualify for the state speech competition. And then the spring, we won, as Mr. Bauerman shared earlier, we won the boys conference, boys tennis conference championship undefeated in the conference. We won the baseball conference championship by three games, so played great. We also played for the conference championship in softball, unfortunately came out a little short on that evening, but we were right there. Then beyond that, you know, the adaptive softball state championship was absolutely a highlight and wonderful to see. And then some results from this past weekend, an individual qualified for the state tennis tournament and finished third overall in the state, kind of a unique piece of that. In the semifinal match, he got beat by the individual that eventually became the state champ. And then in the third-place match, he beat the defending state champ to win third place. So, it's kind of a unique circumstances there. And then at the state track and field meet, the place winners, Kyle Rachel, finished ninth in the mile and two mile, scoring points for us. And Zach Stephenson finished fourth in the 300 hurdles. And then on the girls' side, Tess Miskin, just missed out on defending her state title from a year ago in the mile, getting second, and then turned around an hour later and got fourth in 800. So, some great performances, great, great opportunities, and just had a really good year. So. So then, the other three things we talk about or would like to talk about yet today was the activity bus. We ran four buses two times a night. The cost was about $55,000 for the full year. John and I and Pat got together at the end of the year here and talked a little, Pat's our bus operator, Pat Huber from Palmer Bus. And we thought that the first set of four buses that we ran were pretty well, they had 25 to 30 kids on each bus, so that's 120 kids or so at the 445 route. But on the 6:00 PM route, we had one or two, you know, one to three, one to five. You know, sometimes early in the season, we might have a few more than that, but we were often sending two of the buses back because we only had to go east or west, not, you know, all the same, not as spread out as the 445 bus. So, our recommendation on that one would be to discontinue the 6:00 PM activity bus. We just didn't feel that we had enough people, and that's what we built into our budget, is discontinuation of that. I believe, John, when we talked about it, the, not only were the students from the athletics or whatever get on the bus, but we actually had a lot of kids staying out here for the academic side. And, you know, it's always hard to say what portions or whatever, but it was certainly almost 50/50 or a little bit better, more academic.
I would say on average, it was for sure 50/50, if not slightly more from the academic side of people seeking into state after school, but yes, more on the activity side.
So, this recommendation then is for, is for the four routes at 445? Continue that?
Continue that, discontinue the 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM routes, yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Bus wifi, we put it on the trip buses, the trip buses are the ones that take, you know, students to events, whether it's the speech team or whether it's the girls' golf team or the boys' golf team or, you know, tennis. We have about 10 or 11 buses that have the wifi. And for $15,000, I think it's well spent. In fact, some of the coaches said they used it between events and those kinds of things to get updates and actually check on stuff back in the office through email and whatnot. So, we would recommend continuing the current wifi or current amount of wifi. And then finally, student performance, ticket pricing for, and then John, you'll correct me if I'm wrong, for students that go to our school, have ID, they get into games for free. We probably saw, well, we did see a 43% increase, and again, that was in an appendix that was attached to the, to the report in the board information. We did see a 43% increase in attendance for students. Didn't start off really well in the fall, it was kind of down, although volleyball showed some pretty good numbers. Football was pretty flat for total attendance for students. But, but again, we didn't, we had some early games and we didn't have, everything kind of worked out on some of the, some of the IDs came back without the scan card or the scan number on it, so we had to get those reprinted. It did end up better in the end for football, but overall, their numbers pretty much stayed pretty, pretty consistent from the prior year. But winter sports, girls' hockey, boys' hockey, basketball, girls' and boys' basketball, all pretty substantial increases. So, we would, you might ask what the cost would be on that. Last year, we had about $40,000 in revenue from ticket sales with the increase. We could have gotten maybe $50,000 in ticket sales, but if you don't have the free tickets, you know, so it's always kind of hard to say what, what money or revenues you might be missing out on. But I thought with 43% increase in attendance, I mean, that's, that shows a pretty good school's spirit. So, we're suggesting that we stay with the current, current program of if the student has a student ID with a proper barcode on it, then they get free.
So, I think, Reggie, I'd recommend, can we just take all three at one time? Are there questions for John?
I have a question.
Go ahead. John?
Both of my sons use their phones on the buses, on the bus to do homework, so in general, it's done by the time, well, we live, you know, we are 25-minute, 30-minute bus ride, but in general, it's done by the time they get home, but they use their phones for that. Has there been any talk about, since more kids are going to have devices and can use that time constructively, I don't know what the cost would be, I don't, has there been any discussion?
We haven't discussed it administratively, as I, from what I remember, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. We haven't looked, I've looked at it a little bit with Eastern Carver, and Eastern Carver's a little bit different and some of the bus rides aren't that long. So, I mean, and some of our elementary bus rides wouldn't be that long.
And I believe, Mike, we're one year away from a new transportation contract, right?
Right. We're, we'll have 15, 16, 16, 17, it's probably a two-year deal that we're working on.
So, that might be a great time to negotiate that as part of our package, too. We might get more bang for the buck. But in the meantime, there's no reason we can't run the numbers and bring it to the board, give an idea of what the total cost would be, what our potential impact is. You know, we can, we can figure that out, and then at least you'll see the numbers.
Yeah, it's interesting to have that data.
Yeah. Chuck? This may actually fall into the same situation, it might make sense to look at it for now, but it might make more sense to look at it in the next contract. When you were presenting about the activity bus and about wifi naming and stuff like that, we had a question, or I had a question about providing location services or GPS within the buses so that parents could track where that bus is, especially when it's late and it's cold morning. And I don't know, have you ever heard back on?
We're in the process.
Okay.
And we're doing regular routes. What we've done is, we do have Zonar is our company that provides GPS services for our buses and actually for some of our school vehicles. So, we have Zonar on those. It's the regular routes that we're starting with first. We haven't done anything with the special education routes as of yet. So, we're just trying to get the regular routes figured out. The Zonar's working fine. We've been able to, it's amazing stuff that you could track. You go 66 on 169 as you're coming back, we're going from the bus garage and a little red flag comes up and says you're going too fast. But, so we do have Zonar on the regular buses and have been using that for about a half year. We're also in the process of adding TransFinder, which is a routing software. And those two together, TransFinder will, that will allow us this fall to, you know, child's coming out, doesn't know what bus, you can go on your iPad mini or whatever, and you can find out what bus the student is supposed to go on. And they will all kind of get together and we'll be able to track buses. We haven't quite figured out how to open that up, and we're still working through the process on getting that.
Super. You know how many times we can deal with a parent, if they have a terrible one.
So, at this point, we're not, it's not something, an app a parent could look at to see how far out the bus is?
We're working towards that.
Okay.
We would hope that it's going to be available.
Maybe just one point that I could add, because they've asked me for a little bit of help, which is odd that they're asking me in this regard, but the bus companies also, they are on Twitter now, so they are also trying to utilize that medium to communicate. And they're, you know, they started that, I think.
So, would Pat would then do that? I mean, obviously.
Yeah, actually, they did. They tweeted out the bus.
You know, they'd be able to put us, you know, this bus is late, or this bus is running early, or whatever. That, that was probably late winter, early spring that they started that?
That is Palmer.
Palmer. Yeah.
I don't know.
At Palmer.
I don't remember exactly what it is, but certainly we have.
At Palmer Bus Hall.
There you go.
So, it'd be our expectation that by fall, we have these companies or those apps working together, the technologies, so that our parents can get communication on that and get it working, right?
We're close. We're still working on.
They started that around Christmas, now you're.
Yep, and we're, we actually have training on the routing software tomorrow and Wednesday. And then after we get the routes in, we're going to, yes, we're close, I don't know, I'm not going to promise September 1st.
Okay, okay.
Well, I think you keep it.
And it is, it's a work in progress.
The other, the other piece of it, Reggie, with the tickets, you know, we made last year, the board took, in their vote, said that the SAC students would also get in for free. And I would imagine that the board would like to continue that as our good friends and partners with the SACs community.
Other questions for you, John, or for Mike, on this topic? So, you're asking for three actions, let me try to summarize if we can get a motion and a second vote. You're asking to, your recommendation is to continue the activity bus in the 445 for routes, discontinue 6:00 PM routes. Secondly, it's to continue the current wifi on the buses as it's been. And third, continue the current ticket structure, which probably, to your point, would include allowing in the students from SAC. So, no changes to that.
No changes to that, right.
Is that a destination? All right, or we get a motion from?
I'm at.
In a second?
Okay.
Second, Sean? Any additional questions or discussion?
Just, just one. Would there be any reason, if some of the little few people that are trying to get on that 6:00 PM activity bus, missing that 445 by like 10 minutes or something, there may be a smaller, do you think, okay? We'll never.
All right, we will proceed with the vote. All those in favor of those three items as represented, signify the same "aye".
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. We're going to move to item 13, JP and Nancy, I think, are going to present and come forward.
Just to tee up, before this board meeting in, in our learning session, we spent a good hour talking through the preferred technology plan. So, for those at home, this may seem like a shorter presentation, but as we've already gone into depth with the preferred plan, could you two provide us a very brief summary of what the base was and what the preferred is that you'd like them to take action on today?
And sure, leading into that, we heard from some teachers who were very excited about what the opportunities they were able to create in their classrooms this year because of the tools that they were provided. And so, going into next year, the base plan, what is currently, currently in motion is to take our kindergarten rollout, which are iPads in carts of 12, and make that happen in first grade as well, so first grade classrooms would also get carts of iPads. And then our Pearson rollout, which is a one-to-one rollout, where kids are able to bring their devices to and from school and continue what they do at school, at home on their device. We would, we would have students that are in the sixth grade currently bring their devices with them to seventh grade, and we would get one-to-one devices again for sixth-grade students. So, those rollouts would, from kindergarten to first, and then from sixth to seventh. And so, what we're, what we presented to the board during the learning session, and something that we were asking for acting on this evening, is to expand those rollouts for the fall into, to include eighth and ninth grade as well.
Questions from the board? We've had numerous discussions on this. Chuck? Angel, Paul?
Sure.
I have a question. So, since we're moving forward a little sooner than was anticipated, when will teachers get these iPads?
Yeah. So, some eighth grader, eighth grade teachers already have iPads as part of our previous approval of course revisions and the technology that went along with those, even in eighth grade. But if that, if with, with the approval, then what we would hope to do is by the middle of this month, have, even at the end of the summer, have opportunities for teachers to come in, in eighth grade, and pick up iPads for that grade level, because that would be the device that we would use for, for eighth grade students. All, all teachers, district-wide, this spring, before they went home for the summer, were provided with a new MacBook computer, their primary, yeah, work computer. And so, they all have those already.
Chuck? I just, first of all, I can look at the preferred rollout for 2015-16. Right below this is the rollout timeline for the rest, based on the preferred model. I just wonder if we just want to act on 2015-16 preferences right now. We may find that after this year, you may even want to celebrate that, so, you know, so I would just prefer taking action on 15-16.
Absolutely. I think we'll kind of watch it and adjust and move more quickly, more slowly, however we see that we need to do that, absolutely.
Then I would like to offer the motion that we go to the preferred 2015-16.
I'll make that motion.
Well, motion made, you're second the motion.
Yes. Oh, second.
Chuck's making the motion that we accelerate, the accelerated plan to include the 16 proposal. So, that's what you're second?
Yes.
Okay. Any additional discussion on that?
I have a question.
Okay.
If the teachers were given MacBooks, what device, has, has a device been determined for ninth grade?
Yeah. So, the, when we went through the, the technology design team, that working group of teachers asked for ninth-grade students to be also on a MacBook platform.
Okay. Follow-up question. I, I love the Apple platform and what it can do. Are we, what will, is there a future plan for our students to have access to different platforms that they will or will not, or may be using in their life after graduation?
Absolutely. So, we, one of the, one of the recommendations that came out of that teacher group was that we did not have a single platform experience for kids.
Right.
We had a multi-platform. And so, all of our Windows-based computer labs would still be there.
Stay there.
Yeah. And we still have coursework in our high school that are done primarily through our businesses, business course, our business department and project lead the way, that still use Windows computers.
The other thing I would add, too, is that there's also a plan, and we already have a significant presence of Chromebooks at the high school, based on work that's happened over the last few years. And that's going to continue Chromebook carts at the elementary and middle level, so there will be a chance, depending on, to be able to go back and forth.
Yeah, and I would also offer the board and the. Yeah, and I would also offer the board and the public that's listening that in some of our courses, we're also offering programming on Android tablets. And so, you know, we're really trying to create a, you know, we use this term multi-platform experiences, what we're trying to create for shop kids.
And I think the important piece, because our Project Lead the Way courses are an example of this, the tool change is based on what we need to deliver from a curriculum point of view. So, you know, we have more high-end computers in our Project Lead the Way classes, or the Android tablets in our new computer science class at the middle level. You know, again, a tool has to change based on what we're trying to deliver from an outcome for the course.
And then basically, that's what I was gonna share too. When we get our academies set up and our CAPS program, the expectation is, is that it's the cutting-edge, kind of state-of-the-art types of technologies. So with our academies, for example, if Wells Fargo determines they're gonna be a partner in the, you know, in finance area, I would envision that they're going to bring in their state-of-the-art, state-of-the-art equipment for our students to work the bank or the credit union or whatever. And that's the beauty of our academies and CAPS approach, is that we're not reliant upon MacBooks or Chromebooks. We're reliant upon whatever the industry is using now, you know, and then in, they're gonna help us upgrade and keep our partnerships authentic in real life.
Other questions? I have two, but I don't wanna step on anyone else. First was a, just more of a process question. You had sixth graders who had iPads this year, were already approving that we're gonna replace those with the new sixth graders and then the seventh graders, the new, the former sixth graders moving to the seventh grade. A, I'm assuming they don't take the iPads home over the summer.
No.
Does the same student get the same iPad? Is it cleaned and white somehow? Because they don't need sixth grade data on there, they need seventh grade apps or whatever. How does that work?
So the same student, so the iPad that a student will receive in sixth grade, each, each summer it will be cleaned and wiped, both physically and virtually. And then that same iPad will be with them when they do seventh grade.
Right.
And the same one will be with them when they go to eighth.
So the iPad literally follows the student.
But the base image will change, will change. You are correct on that. The base image will change somewhat as kids progress through.
They've kept all their information at Google Drive, I can assure you.
Yeah, we show kids how to back up to Google Drive, which is what we want them to do, and we want all of you to do as well on your devices. Which is a way to protect, protect information, keeping it right on the device.
All right, totally different question. Actually, I want to really go back to Chuck, because I want to make sure I understand what the motion is, so that we're all on the same page. What I understand, your motion to be, Chuck, you correct me if I'm right or wrong, we're already, we as a board had already taken action to give you direction to move ahead with the preferred rollout. That's through fifteen. What I hear Chuck recommending or requesting of moving is that we give the green light to the fall of sixteen, those three steps, but not necessarily enacting those steps, just giving the approval of that's, all right, help me, because budgetary-wise, how in the world would we do that?
It's actually accelerating the fall of fifteen, this year.
I'm confused. Please clarify the motion.
Yeah, so I think the motion, yeah, so what we had asked for earlier was, we had talked about the fact that we had already had you approve first grade and seventh grade. What we're really asking you to approve now, and Chuck would like to limit it to that, is to add eighth grade and ninth grade for this coming fall.
The preferred plan, the preferred.
For this coming year.
It's the accelerated.
So then what, okay, I made this, I thought you talked something about the two thousand sixteen plan.
If you look right below that, it says that, it kind of implies that all the rest of that would happen if we accept the preferred plan, I say, let's just happen. That's the portion.
I'm still not.
Doesn't mean we're not, we're not talking about anything for the fall.
Look, portion, even the middle blue portion, yes.
No.
That's what, okay, hence my confusion, because that's the fall of sixteen, which is a year.
Right, we don't, we don't want to deal with sixteen.
For example, we're gonna have a tech director.
Exactly.
Correct. If they change the pacing or the steps, if we're only, if we're only approving the preferred plan for this fall, then that doesn't, that doesn't lock in the next director to have to follow the plan. It also allows us to go faster or slower, so.
I think I'm interpreting the same way you are, because the preferred plan is the darker blue in the middle. But Chuck keeps saying, no, the white blue at the bottom, that's where I'm.
No, the preferred plan is the dark blue in the middle. It says preferred.
Okay, I think what he's trying to say is.
I gotta get back to him.
He'd like to make the motion to approve the dark blue.
Right.
The accelerated plan.
However, there's a sentence down here that says rollout timeline based on acceptance of preferred model. He's saying.
Not that.
That this doesn't have to happen necessarily, just because we're approving the dark blue.
That's fine. I'm just trying to clarify, we are not approving anything beyond, we're not taking any action to approve anything beyond the dark blue.
That was my clarifying point before I made the motion.
Okay.
Did I interpret that correctly?
I most misunderstood it.
You should have actually just made the motion like you.
Okay. Any other questions or any confusion, or is it just me? It's just me. So, the motion on the table is to approve the dark blue. That's the motion.
That's what we'd like.
All those in favor of approving the dark blue signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The dark blue, pass. We're here for a long time tonight, folks, not a good time. Going out on a high note, J P. All right, let's go back to item fifteen point two. Height.
All right. So we'll just click through this and now that we're just doing the preferred plan, my heart's back down to somewhere normal, so thank you for that. Let's see, budget changes. You did receive budget books at your table. It was also an electronic copy that you received in the board packet. There were some changes from the preliminary budget, I'll just go through those quickly and take any questions. The changes since preliminary budget was adopted May eleventh are, in the general fund, we have revenue, we anticipated a one percent increase, the special session bill says two percent increase in both years. And so we added one percent on the general fund formula, which is about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Expenditures, any questions, just go ahead and interrupt, but expenditures, at the last board meeting, you approved having a second early childhood teaching position. Currently, we're still at about that fourteen, fifteen rate, even for one section kind of pace, so I'm just, I put forty thousand dollars in the budget to cover the possible cost of that, adding that second teacher. Again, we still have two and a half months to fill those slots, but currently, we're still at about that fourteen, fifteen level. Supervision changes in teaching and learning, we moved the, the two people in those positions up to supervisors, much like we have in special ed. We added a halftime teaching and learning coordinator and the supervisor of communications into the general fund expenditure budget. Building fund, we will receive the proceeds for the bond sale, hundred and two point five million dollars. We increased the cost of the preferred technology plan. We are pricing, we had four projects that came in after, as we were working on the budget and the pricing seems good, so we're adding four projects that worked on the preliminary budget. And then the estimated cost of the new project expenses to be incurred. We're gonna be doing some stuff next spring, we're gonna be doing some stuff this fall, probably with security and, and so some of those projects will start to eat into that hundred and two million over the next two years. I put six million dollars in to say that's how much we're gonna spend. Don't know how much we're gonna spend, but that's the original thing. Transportation, we won't be providing the sixteen activity bus. Capital, there, again, we had some project equipment that we were trying to get pricing on. And community education, that, the original budget, we were a little short because of the changes in early childhood, it hadn't programmed it totally into the original budget. So, again, community education, we're still seeing about the same effect on fund balance, but it just shifted up a little bit. And so those are budget, revenue, and expenditure numbers. You can still see that we're, with a one percent increase in the revenue at the general fund formula, that we should be maintaining an improvement on fund balance overall for the general fund. We are dipping into the two million dollar capital, fund balance just a little, a hundred thousand dollars into that two million dollar fund balance. And those would be the highlights that I have on that. Any questions?
We're seeking approval.
Right, we need to approve the budget so we can continue on with all the contracts and things that would be.
So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Question for Mike relative to the fifteen, sixteen budget. All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the fifteen, sixteen budget as presented by mine, changes reflected tonight from what we'd seen before signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Bonnie, we forgot your button. All right, just continue in order. This keeps the business. There we go. All right, buckle up, folks, we have item seventeen point one, the all-important start of the slog through the policies, the four hundred series. I heard music, take it away.
I never thought I'd get to presenting less interesting than the budget, but. Sorry, buddy. I was thinking about getting some elementary kids to come with me, because that seems to go well whenever. You know, last year, you charged us with doing a review of our schoolwork policies and we worked with our attorney, Canute Flynn, Lynn Dean, to go through our policy manual and reconcile our policies with the MSBA recommended policies. And Canute Flynn and Dean is our attorney of record. The nice piece is that they are also a lead firm that usually works with MSBA to write their policies, so it took them a while to go through them. And as you receive this first batch of policies, you can probably start to understand why there are a number. And I came to previously, one month ago, when we laid out a proposal for going through the policies, taking us a series at a time, that we wanted to start with the four hundreds and then take a series each month, then we'd start with the four hundreds and the five hundreds, which are policies on employees and then policies on students, so that those would be updated for the start of the school year. I believe that our practice has been to follow MSBA model policies whenever possible. An example of when we might deviate from this, we, this year, we had the D N R policy, where we had a request from a family that was questioning our policy. And what we did at that time was we listened to those parents come in, the board had some questions, so we decided to convene our policy committee, which is three members of the school board. We listened to what families had to say, we did some other model policies that were out there, other districts that had deviated from MSBA. And we felt that it was worth the risk to deviate from our, from the MSBA standard policy at that time. But even in doing that, we went back to Canute Flynn and Dean and asked them to rewrite the policy. We didn't write it on our own. So we, you know, we did have their lens again, because they're working for us, you know, to write those policies. Currently, like you said, we laid out the schedule, we got the first batch, there's probably about thirty-six, thirty-seven policies that were given to you in board book. And if you look through this grouping, it's really the fall into four categories. There's ones that have no change to them, that's only one of them. There's policies that have updates, and these could be legal citations, these could be best practice, these could be changes that the legislature made, you know, these things are constantly, they're kind of living and breathing, and the MSBA does a nice job of updating them, but, you know, as board, we don't constantly update, we'd be updating policies every meeting, so, which is what we're gonna do for the next six months. But the policies with updates is about twenty-one of these, thirty-six. New policies that we don't have right now, there's nine in this grouping. And we have five of them that we would like to remove. And the reason we'd like to remove them is because really, they're not MSBA model policies and either by practice, we've started, we've actually deviated from some of them because we put language in our contracts that addressed the concerns that we originally drew up a policy for, said we negotiated those things and put them into contracts and we really don't need them to be policies anymore. You know, right now, what I'm asking to do is accept this as a, as a first reading, a first look at these policies that did go out with you. And I can really do, you know, three things for you right now, and I can attempt to answer some broad questions, because again, you've looked through the amount of material here. For me to anticipate what it is that you might ask questions, that's just very difficult. Even the summaries that we receive from the lawyers, I would say, are limited in scope, because again, to guess what, what you might want or to summarize that, it's almost impossible to summarize it in a paragraph. So I can attempt to answer some of those questions. You could ask me questions and I could research those and give you a response. And I think the third thing that we could move forward with is I could call a policy committee meeting together to have a representative body from the board to answer any questions that you might have before our next board meeting, our next regularly scheduled board meeting in July, we have a second one this month. Our schedule is that we're gonna do a first reading, and then what we were planning on doing was having a second reading on the four hundred series and a first reading on the five hundred series. Now, the schedule is put together for our convenience, it's not, we're not beholden to it, so if we need to slow down or speed up or monitor and adjust to what you're comfortable with doing, we can do that. But this is kind of the first, okay, we said we're gonna do this, now we see it, oh, okay, there's a lot of stuff here that I may or may not have questions on, that I'm asking, my, I guess my, excuse me, I'd be asking for is, what do you, what direction would you like to give me to move forward on this?
So what's the sense of the board in terms of how to address any questions you may have relative to the four hundred series as the beginning, as always? I have, John, we have a schedule meeting out, and I've actually written up to make it simpler, I have a page and a half of questions. Why don't we just questions, clarifications, so that they can be very easily addressed? I don't think this is a thing you can do that. I think it's the kind of thing that I could provide to you, you could answer some of them, you could maybe look there and say, this maybe requires policy committee, but I'd like to know what other people think, how to handle whatever questions you may have.
I think, go ahead.
Me?
Yeah.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I would prefer to be able to email you about a question, you can email me, because sometimes I might be looking at this policy and that policy, and then I might forget something, you know, in our case, maybe.
I'd agree with that. And if something's complicated, that maybe, we feel the need for the policy committee to convene, that certainly, but I don't want to have meetings just for meetings sake.
Right.
So if we can email our individual questions, then escalate as needed.
Okay.
If needed, I should say.
All right, so procedurally, if you have questions on any of the first reading policies for tonight, the action that's requested from the board is to email us to John. John, you can look at those and determine whether you can answer them quickly, easily, with pen and pen or what have you. If in your judgment, I think you see the need that there's four or five of these or whatever, they're all policy committee, I would suggest you do so. And you can follow the people, you know, asking the questions.
Very cool.
So with that, we need a motion to accept the first reading that we've had tonight, with that process in mind is how we will proceed. And I appreciate also, I appreciate, John, that the schedule is something we can use as a guideline, but if we find that the volume of this is such that it requires more time, we can be flexible. So give a motion to accept the first reading of the four hundred series policies. Matt?
Yeah.
Chuck? Any other discussion on the policies? Any other discussion on the policies? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Please follow up with John, let your conveniences do give you your questions. All right, thank you. All right, a lot of money. Where am I? Oh, I'll spend some money. Seventeen point two, we need to set, make some money, right? Set the sale resolution for the bond and a couple of tranches, so.
Correct. On your, at your table, at your place, there should be a one-page summary of what we're proposing to have happen. Basically, what we're shooting for here is to sell the bonds, the whole one hundred and two million upfront, in call for the sale today, approve the sale on June twenty-second, and by calling, by doing that, we will qualify for some additional state aid. Less state aid than what we thought we were going to get, but overall, we'll still get some state aid on doing it this way. And the second piece that we have today is, we have two motions that need to be approved to, we're calling for it for just a little bit different way. Most, about ninety million of it is going to be on a competitive sale, and twelve million is going to be a negotiated sale, a negotiated sale. Edward Jones is going to sell on a retail basis, as opposed to, in a competitive sale, it's more of a big box. Only the big companies are typically, they get groups of people and investors to institutional investing going on for the, for the larger sales. So that's what we have in front of you today. There are two motions, one to sell, what was it, ninety million? And the second motion is to sell twelve million, one hundred and thirty thousand dollars in a negotiated sale with Edward Jones.
Are these all called, or?
No, I can see that, that it was, it's only...
But we need to take them two separate pieces for the...
Right, right. Two separate pieces. Oh, the other portion about the Edward Jones piece is that we are setting a, if we don't come in under four and a quarter percent for the life of the bond, that we have the choice of rejecting it then. So that's what we've done in the past with some of our other bonds, when we've done negotiated sales, we set the maximum that we're going to sell them at, and for that, Edward Jones piece, it's four and a quarter.
So seventeen point two, we are seeking approval then for the set sale resolution of the ninety-three seventy?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Angela, any questions on the first, the two resolutions, this one's pretty competitive, ninety point three, seven million dollars, any discussion of questions? All those in favor of approving, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Let's move on to seventeen point three. Need a motion to approve the negotiated sale of twelve point one three million school building bond.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Sean. Any questions on this motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
I have seventeen point four. Scott, you want to come on up?
Yep.
The Ts and Cs are kind of a dislocation of a lot of contracts that have been disused for credit, solidified for it.
So I emailed to a copy of two different documents, one was the terms and conditions for cabinet members, and the other one was for supervisors, managers, and a bunch of unaffiliated employees. What that comprised of was, we have approximately thirty people on different contracts. And my first year in HR, I noticed, it'd be a lot nicer if we could simplify all of this, get them all tiered, and assist them based on salaries and benefits as close as possible, and put it all into one document, so when we meet with employees coming into these different tiers, I have the document to show them. And it's similar across those groups, and that, we stick to that. It also gives Rod parameters, when, and we're going out recruiting people to come in, we've got a salary range that we can work with that's competitive, to go after some of the best. I give our technology director, as an example, right now, we're going to try to fill that position, we need to be competitive, and have a range of employees to have an idea of where we're standing for that. So that's what these two documents, it was taken from the collaboration of different contracts, group them, try to be as similar as possible.
And the concept then for all of us is that when they come forward, so let's say when we're hiring...
Ed and Nika tonight would have been an example.
Yeah, yeah. When we're hiring these folks, you'll get, you'll actually get a terms, instead of, sometimes you'll still get a contract, but in most cases, you're just going to get some kind of assignment sheet that lists, you know, the very brief terms of employment. What this also helps from a budgeting standpoint is, when we go in and we're negotiating, whether it's the largest group, the teachers, or the affiliated mat will, we can more clearly set a budget going forward. And this board has seen over the last, you know, four years, we've hit some bumps in the road when it's come to bringing people forward, where we kind of wonder, boy, does that fit, and what's the model, and, you know, where do we have all the set points? The range really does provide that for us. So I'm very supportive, Scott's put a lot of work into it, and I think it's going to pay off in the long run. We, I would guess you're not going to see change at all in the first time through, or if so, just very little adjustments, but over time, it'll really, it'll really pay off. So I'd recommend approval of the, we're calling them personnel policies, because that's what our attorneys tell us we have to call them. They're not policies, they're procedures, but for sake of this, this type of contractual agreement, he'd like us to accept these as two personnel policies for terms and conditions. Our motion to accept. Angela, for a second?
Second.
Any questions for Scott?
Comments?
A comment, I would commend Scott, this is, as an HR professional myself, I know some of these can be a nightmare to create, especially as you're saying, you're dealing with ranges of contracts that are very disparate, and nuanced, and specific benefits that we're giving to some for others. So I think that this is fantastic, provides clarity and consistency. So thank you very much for your hard work.
Other comments? I would also commend Scott, I had a few questions just from the occasion Scott had to do, he was very patiently helping to understand a few things, so thank you for doing that. All right, with that, we will move to accept these two personnel policies.
Thank you.
And present to us tonight, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Head pass, thank you, Scott. I have seventeen point five, Chuck would like to add a discussion that he's been able to afford.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Move the board, you'll know that I put in front of your space a resignation for your consideration. I want to know, it's only coincidental, this also followed Dr. Beazik's policy presentation. For your consideration, I will read it into the record. Richard Bollman, board members, it is with regret that I tender my resignation from the Shakopee School, Public Schools Board Director effective seven thirty-one, two thousand fifteen, or as requested by the board. I intend to seek another public office this fall, although it is not a legal requirement for me to resign, I feel compelled by a moral and ethical obligation to do so. This allows Shakopee Schools to move forward knowing who their leaders will be, and removes the requirements and costs of special elections should my campaign be successful. I'm grateful for having had the opportunity to serve on the board of this fine organization for the past eight years, and I offer my best wishes for its continued success. I'd also like to note, you know, I grew up here in Shakopee, in a pretty poor family situation, much like our second speaker during graduation. By the time I reached junior high, I already had my own chemical and behavioral issues and my grade went bad. Both the coaches, and the teachers, and the principals, they taught me some important life lessons first that I met, and that despite internal or external influences, I was the person that really had to choose my own destiny. Was homeless for a good chunk of my senior high years, from the age of fifteen, actually to about nineteen. But a number of members of the community stepped forward and served as foster parents so that I could continue my education and graduate here in Shakopee. It was always my intent to pay back Shakopee schools, and I felt I had a big debt, and so to be able to pay them back in some small way has been true in my own. Is now that I ask you, I have also that obligation for Shakopee's community in order to do this. I will offer that, should you, as you noted, I made this effective seven thirty-one, two thousand fifteen, or at your request. I also put the recent changes to the school board election bill, and so I will lead up to the board to make the decision when they want that resignation effective, including if you wish to not accept the resignation, I will serve up my term if I were not to be elected, or you would have to replace me if I were elected at the end of the year. And if you wish, I can vacate while you discuss.
Well, I guess a question, and I don't know, this is something we need to action tonight, so we can, we don't, we have to have that discussion at this point in time, so we can take that offline, and come back with a acceptance rejection recommendation modification, and perhaps the next meeting, we can talk offline as well about that. But I think it's important to note, Chuck, I assume you were my first chair, I would refer you to my first chair when I was the board, and that's, that was important to me, your service to the community as a whole, and certain of the board is, is not to be understated, and is with regret that I find you in this to do so, but I know why you're doing it, and I think that's extremely honorable. So let us, as a board, figure out the best way to facilitate this transition that you're requesting, and we're going to work your life and run it until you're gone. But we will certainly honor and discuss and reward the, the clear questions and questions. Any other comments?
You said my side gets better than I get, so I very much, Chuck, thank you, you've been a mentor and friend to me, and your services are inspirational. I commend you, again, like Greg said, for following this process, I think that is the right thing to do, and it's something that I would expect of a person your chair.
So in terms of action, we won't take any formal action tonight, but we will discuss and then come back in consultation with you, and to proceed formally to move ahead, to work with your position. All right. I think we are through the items on the agenda, is there anything from another perspective anyone like to bring up? Maybe reports? None?
I would, well, just like to thank everybody for graduation, I think it was a fantastic experience this year, and especially thank all the volunteers who made the all-night grad party happen, that's a phenomenal event. And I know a lot of people worked very late into the night, but early in the morning to give our seniors a great cent.
And I think it's important to note, we have been our speaker, that's on the board, Mr. McCann, for representing the board, so equally, at the commencement, so thank you very much. Want to go around the corner, Angela?
I just want to say thank you to all the people who have volunteered their time for our after-referendum meetings, and all that's going to happen, and it's my third time, so thank you for everybody who stepped up.
Chuck?
Looking forward to our first, we're with the court planning group on Thursday, we're going to go off to some sites, so kind of kicking off the next phase, let's head going down.
Sure. Sarah? I warned a couple people it's going to do this, so I'm going to go around the cabinet too. Mike, anything?
I'm good.
Bob? Julie?
Just doing an awful lot of hiring.
Okay.
Good things.
It's a good thing.
A quick update on CAPS, we confirmed our students just the last couple of days, so it looks like we'll have twenty-one students at St. Francis for healthcare and medicine, and right now, the number for digital design is seventeen, but we expect that to climb to about twenty, based on some recruiting that's still ongoing. So I think, given the pace that we put it together, we're in a good place, and we have our next CAP advisory board meeting next Monday the fifteenth. And the last thing I would like to say is just thank you to the board for approving tonight the changes that will help Ed and Nika move to a supervisory contract, that's partly because Ed will be helping with the day-to-day operation of the CAPS program, and then allowing me to backfill that with continuing to add a point five of piece where Kara Osmondson is moving on to a deal, full-time DLC position, and that allows us to keep moving. And I just really appreciate your ongoing support in order to make that happen, so.
John, anything from you? That would be...
I don't think it's another John.
That was a John Paul.
No, it's been a great year, thanks for everybody, exactly what you were saying, I thought graduation went well, and thanks for everybody that was involved, and got up to meet a lot of kids over the weekend, that speaks to the all-night graduation party, I saw a lot of them yesterday, and a great time.
Dave?
We, maybe some of you saw the article in the paper about the ACT results, and all our juniors took it this year, it was state-required. There's a chance that it won't be state-required next year, that is a little up in the air for this special session, and they're locked in on it not being required for all juniors, but we'll see. The article in the paper talked about a delay in the results, but it really wasn't, they said it was going to be three to eight weeks, so we'll be getting the results here in the next few weeks. We're not sure how that will be reported out, but know this, results do change when a hundred percent of your kids take the test instead of seventy percent, and that'll be something to watch for kind of across the whole, the whole state, we'll see the same thing.
Scott?
Working hard with the Personnel Committee and Dale's group to set some dates to begin our teacher negotiations, finding a common night, I have that first night's been difficult, but we'll get there. And the other thing too, is just let you know, Rod actually included me in on this, we have the National Conference for HR for schools being hosted here in a couple weeks in Minneapolis, so the whole HR team will be heading down to that, considering there are the good topics in human resources, Charlie.
Hi. The kindergarten, we're still working on the additions, finishing up some stuff from last year. We're also expanding the, the expansion for the parking at Sunpath, and Sweeney should be starting this week, possibly as early as Wednesday, depending on how rain sets in and all that stuff. Could start as early as Wednesday on that. We are nearing the completion on the elevator project at East, we had to replace an elevator near the pool, chlorine affected the stainless steel for some reason, I don't know what's going on with chlorine and stainless steel. And then, we have some minor projects at Junior High West and East this year, art and home ec or fax, and some of, another computer lab at West, so, so there are a lot of things going on, a lot of moving parts still, and getting geared up for summer. Cleaning has started, team cleaning at the buildings, we take the custodial staff out of all the buildings and group them together and start cleaning one building at a time, that started today.
JP, final, final part of words of wisdom?
Yeah, I just want to again, thank the board for a great last five years, and for the kind words that people shared this evening, and I will definitely look back on my time in Shakopee with, with, with good memories, and perhaps I can see me around here again some day, we'll see. And then, and then more importantly, I want to, on behalf of all of our eighth and ninth grade teachers, and say thank you for acceptance of the recommendation on moving forward with those grade levels for this year. We surveyed teachers, I forgot to mention this during the presentation, we surveyed teachers about making sure that they were on board with this recommendation if we were to bring them here, and out of seventy-eight teachers, seventy-seven said, go for it, we want to do it. And, and the one person that said, even in her, even in the note that that person wrote, seemed like they wanted to do it. And, and the one person that said, even in her, even in the note that that person wrote, seemed like they wanted to do it. And so, um, so that, I think that's telling that they want to move very quickly. And, and I also, I, I, you know, and I think those eighth and ninth grade students are gonna be pretty jazzed as well.
Me too.
So I think that was a great move forward for our district and I think that's something to feel really good about. Thank you.
Crystal?
Well, what they're all doing is keeping me pretty busy. Uh, I just wanted to say, uh, I'll just be working on some of our projects and that sort of thing, with the district calendar and that sort of thing. But, um, I just wanna say thank you again to you guys for supporting communication in the district. And I'm really excited about where we're gonna go and how we're gonna, we're gonna elevate this district even more. So thank you.
I dumped the gun before.
That's right. John?
Nancy took my thing.
I get it.
Uh, Nancy had shared with me, um, the enrollment numbers on Saturday night for CAPS. And I know all of you know how much I have wanted this program since the first moment I heard about it. And, um, really want to thank Nancy for being its biggest cheerleader for Rod, to Rod, for supporting it, for the board for supporting it. I think it's gonna do amazing things. And it just reminds me that if you build it, they will come. The fact that we are already fairly full for our pilot year is pretty impressive. I would also like to thank Reggie for, um, your off-the-cup, uh, recommendation of doing this, because I think this is really cool. That was really, that was really cool to hear from all you guys tonight. So I learned some things, so thank you.
Mr. Swanson?
Um, three things, three things. I, they're all together. I just wanted to say that in the last week and a half of school, I drove down from Wells Fargo to Shakopee to Eagle Creek and junior high west on three different occasions. Had the great fortune to be a part of a lot of different, wrecking the different Sherp awards. Um, were super cool, the talent show awards at Eagle Creek. But you know, the thing that was probably the neatest, that took probably no energy other than just a really great idea, was when the fifth graders graduated from Eagle Creek, and I assume they did it in every building. I've never been a part of something so cool in my life and I have it on my phone, we can put it on and show it. But it was, they had all the kids in all the hallways of every grade, every classroom, high-fiving the fifth graders, uh, one floor to the next, and parents were there and the cheers. And we were filming my son, who is a fifth grader, going into sixth grade. And he was okay until he saw mom and me and then he starts bawling to second or something like that. Just because of the, the, the energy and the, the emotion of the room was so high. And that was the, that was one of the single most emotionally cool, neat experiences because it was so genuine, it was so, I was so real, that everybody was so, uh, excited for these fifth graders to go on. And I just, whoever had that idea, geez, hats off. It was fantastic, it was awesome. And that kind of stuff, that kind of recognition and, you know, the easy stuff like that, it just, that, he's not gonna forget that and that graduating class, I can't wait to see that video and I'm gonna put that on there if I'm still around then. So remember when you did this in fifth grade? I just thought it was really neat, whoever had that idea, thank you, keep that kind of stuff up. That's all.
It was one item.
Sorry, I mean, there's three items that were, they were all, the recognition. Sorry, I know, we lost another.
Dr. Thompson? Nothing additional. No partying words, huh? No partying words.
Can I say one more?
No, we're done.
Oh, wow, we gotta go back around. Yes, John?
I just wanna say thank you to the board as well. I have a ninth grader next year and I saw what happened at sixth grade this year with my sixth grader. And I am so very excited for all of the students and all of the staff and everything that we are doing technology-related. It does make a difference. Thank you, JP.
So as a reminder, our upcoming meetings, we have July thirteenth, board business meeting. I was about to ask, I think we added a business meeting tonight or the learning session tonight. Why did I think there was something in between that means sort of?
June twenty-second.
Yeah, June twenty-second. So I thought, I thought there was something in there. June twenty-second is a business meeting.
Yep.
Okay. Thought there was one in there, so June twenty-second, July thirteenth, uh, July twenty-eighth through eleventh is the election filing period. August twenty-fourth is the next board business meeting, followed by September fourteen, the next board business meeting. With that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.